Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a forum for candidates running in the November 8th general election. This segment of the forum is for the Ham Lake City Council. I'm Carrie Lund, Executive Director of the Ham Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, who co-sponsors Meet the Candidates with the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters. All candidates were invited to this forum. The Chamber of Commerce and League of Women Voters do not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. This is what this evening is about: informing voters. If you are interested in the League, visit their webpage, lvwabcn.org. Women, men, and young people are invited to join. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters or of the Chamber. L W V posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. The candidates will answer two introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website, and questions of importance to the Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters. We'll end with closing statements. Answers are limited to 90 seconds for each of the two introductory questions and one minute for each of the other questions. Candidates will take turns being first to answer a question. Kathy Tinglestad is our moderator for the evening.
Thank you, Carrie, and welcome, everyone, this evening. I'm happy to be moderating this forum. Again, my name is Kathy Tinglestad, and I live in Coon Rapids, so I'm not eligible to vote for any of these candidates. And we appreciate your kind attention tonight as we begin with the introductory question. And I need to mention that we drew numbers here to determine who would go first, and that will keep our order rotating through the evening. And so the person who's going to start first, they'll switch when it comes to the closing comments. So we try to give everybody as much equal time as possible. But of course, we set them up alphabetically, so I'm going to be a little bit challenged tonight to stay in the order. But the order we're going to go in is first Corinne Seltz, second Jim Doyle, third Rory Green, and fourth Al Parento. So with that, we'll start with the first question, and this will go to Corinne Seltz. And the question is, "What is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?"
Well, thank you. I am Corinne Seltz. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this. It's a wonderful opportunity to take part in the forum. My husband and I have lived in Ham Lake for over 18 years and raised our three children here. I'm running because I believe in giving back to my community. When the kids were growing up, I was a volunteer and board member of the PTA for their sports booster clubs, and I now serve on the board of the Anoka County Master Gardeners. I bring extensive leadership experience in business and in the community. I was a small business owner and currently manage leadership and development for a software company. And I teach at Metro State University Business and Marketing for over 12 years. I think I'll be a strong and effective leader for Ham Lake. I get things done through collaboration and team building. I'm known for taking on large, complex projects and creating simple, effective solutions for positive change. Let me just give you one example of how I lead. In my previous position, I was asked to take on the leadership for due diligence, purchase, and integration of a multimillion-dollar key partner. My goals were to complete the purchase on time, integrate over 100 people into the organization, and not lose any sales or customers in the process. Through my ability to listen, understand the issues, and influence without direct authority, as well as collaborate with all stakeholders, I was able to navigate the challenging issues and deliver successful results. I'll bring those same skills to the Ham Lake City Council. I'll consider each issue with an open mind, and listen to, work with, and represent all citizens to make Ham Lake the best city it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. And I should mention, the first two questions are going to be 90 seconds each, and all the rest of the questions will be 60 seconds. So with that, again, "What is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?" The next one up is Jim Doyle.
All right. Yeah, my motivation is, you know, my dad always said, "Don't live in a city, be part of the city," and that's why I've been doing this for the last 12 years. Started out on planning and zoning for three years. It kind of gives you, you get your feet under the ground, on the ground, and then coming into the council. And my motivation's always been the same. Time has changed, but keeping taxes low, keeping government out of your hair, you know, just trying to make sure government doesn't get too big within the city. Those are the type of things that I really feel. And fiscal responsibility in this community. And we've done that over 12 years. We've dropped the tax capacity rate every year I've been in office. Every year. I'm a big proponent for that. I'm a big proponent for property rights. Those are the things that I want to continue on. And my motivation right now is, we've got some young people on there. We've got a new mayor, we've got a couple of new guys on there. I just want to be a good mentor for them. We've got some instability in the economy right now with inflation and those type of things that are coming up. I've lived that through Ham Lake. I've lived the good times through Ham Lake. And we made the adjustments to make that all work. I have. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. And next up is Rory Green.
Well, thank you, everybody, for attending. Thank you, League of Women Voters. This is a tremendous opportunity to meet a lot of you folks out there. And I had this grandiose speech prepared, and then I thought to myself, "I'm just not going to go that route." So I wrote one word: family, right? To me, this whole thing's about, I see my family taking pictures right now, but it starts with them, right? It starts with this small community. It's that support that my mom and my dad and my kids are supporting me in this opportunity. And I think the biggest thing for me was taking that support and expanding on it. And as I expanded on it, I saw neighbors that were saying, "You should do it! This is a great opportunity! This is something that you've been passionate about? Step up!" And receiving the support from the neighbors, I was like, "Wow, this is great! They're helping me from a finance perspective, they're helping me from like a marketing standpoint, how to campaign, what are my talking points?" So I'm like, "Wow, this is like the epitome of what Ham Lake is all about." And then I started to broaden that variety, or horizon, I should say. And I see folks out here that I've knocked on doors and actually met personally, and it's like, "They're out here now supporting me." And that, to me, is what speaks to the heart of Ham Lake for me, is everybody's in this together, and that's what motivates me. I come from a large family. I have seven members in my family. I've learned to negotiate. We don't always get along, right? But we find common ground, right? Assume positive intent. Assume that we all want to do what's right for our community. And I just am excited about this opportunity, and I look forward to representing all you folks here and all the people I knock on the door. And it's just been an exciting adventure so far.
Thank you. And finally, to wrap up the first opening question, next up is Al Parento.
Hi. Like she said, I'm Al Parento. I'm the less taxes, more freedom guy. I proudly served for over six years on the city council with my good friend Jim Doyle, keeping your taxes as low as possible. Like he said, reducing the tax capacity rate every year. I've been keeping the community safe, supporting our local sheriff. I've worked extensively with the fire department, keeping them up to date with everything they need to be effective. When it comes time to come into your house, God forbid it start on fire. My motivation for doing this is the community, the people of Ham Lake. As I spend time around here, the more people I talk to, they really seem to appreciate what's going on in Ham Lake and how the local government is looking out for them, being honest, transparent, and accountable. And I would like to continue doing that, if people here would like me to continue doing that, because it's a great place for me to move, raise my family, and live. And frankly, I just love Ham Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our second opening question, and we're going to rotate the candidates here as they respond. So the question is, "What are your goals for the future of the city of Ham Lake?" And this is 90 seconds. We'll start with Jim Doyle.
The goals have always been the same for 12 years. Our goal is the same thing that I've always said: you keep taxes low. We want to keep this wide-open spaces in Ham Lake. We want to keep the city sewer and water out of town. We want to, you know, really just make it a happy place to live. And the goals that I look at is, okay, we need to get some more commercial business in here. We're 85% developed. There's some things on the horizon, which are pretty cool. I cross my fingers and knock on wood that's coming soon. But, you know, with the last two, three years, with the economy that it is, who wants to try to build something new somewhere when they can't find people leaving to run their own companies right now? So those are some of the hurdles that we've had trying to get people in here. But that's starting to change, and it really is. We do have a lot of, you know, trying to keep costs down at the city. We've got this inflation. It affects road costs, it affects gas, salt. Everything you can think of that you have in your own lives affects the city, and multiply that by 100 times. Those are the deals that we have to do. So my goals on that is to even that out, flatten it out, so it doesn't affect the members of our community.
Thank you. And the next candidate for this question, and the question is, "What are your goals for the future of the city of Ham Lake?", we'll go to Rory Green.
Hey, I think one of my goals is, you know, I've always been taught to leave things better than the way you received it, right? And Ham Lake's a great city, so there isn't a lot of room to make it exceptional, but that's really my goal. Number one, septic and well, we're going to leave that where it's at, right? Number two, it's going to be the one-acre lots, we're going to adhere to that. But I think what separates me a little bit differently is the opportunity to grow commercial business within Ham Lake. We have 60,000 cars that go up and down 65 every day. I see an opportunity. I see an opportunity where we could put potential restaurants in those spaces. I see people, instead of going to Blaine and Coon Rapids, which by the way, I learned today that Blaine's the 10th largest city in the state. I see that everybody, when I go door-to-door, they're saying, "Hey, where do you typically go out to eat?" "Well, we go to Blaine. Well, we go to Blaine. We go to Coon Rapids, right? We can go to Ham Lake, right? The average median income in Ham Lake's over $100,000. The average median house is over $500,000. There's money here. There's hard-working folks that are wanting that." And as I go door-to-door and ask, like, "What do you think about Ham Lake?" "Ham Lake's great." "How do we make it exceptional, right?" And one of the things they really honed in on was, "What if we put a restaurant on 65? We've got the coffee shop going into place. That's a good win. Let's keep going. We got the momentum." So I think there's some opportunity in that space. And I'll get into probably a little bit of the police and fire department here as the kind of questions progress. It looks like I'm running out of time, so thank you.
Thank you. And we go next to Al Parento.
Well, my goals for the future are basically to keep Ham Lake the same. We've got a great government doing a great job, and things are going really well. I can tell by how many people want to move in here, how the property values are increasing. I talk to people that want to be here and can't find a place to be here and settle for somewhere else. And that's unfortunate for them. I'm glad I'm here. I want to continue to keep the commercial business growing. You're seeing new buildings show up on 65. We've got a coffee shop coming, as was mentioned, and that is a trend that is increasing. I hope that stays on the uptick. Of course, we've got to deal with the Bidenflation and Biden economy, which isn't going to help. We've got some struggles ahead of us. So I would like to continue working to maintain our low tax base, increase our freedoms, which is something I've been an advocate for and worked hard for, to not only protect your personal property rights, but to increase them the entire time I've been involved with the Ham Lake City Council. As I heard, we're about 85% full on residential. I'd like to see that be completed, and I know there's people waiting to get here as soon as they can. Lots sell instantly. We're waiting on home builders to build homes. And that says a lot about how our city's being run, how desirable it is to be here. Thank you.
And finally, to wrap up the second opening question, which is, "What are your goals for the future of the city of Ham Lake?", next up is Corinne Seltz.
Well, Ham Lake, as we all know, is a wonderful place, and I'm passionate about making it an even better place for our families. So I really have three goals. First is keep our taxes low and grow our economy. As we've been hearing, we need more entrepreneurs and innovative businesses to increase our tax base. We have that vibrant commercial corridor in Highway 65, and I'd like to see increased renovation and expansion of commercial businesses and services that enhance the quality of life of our Ham Lake residents. I want to maintain our Ham Lake way of life. Many of us, that's why my family moved here, because we wanted the open space, the large lot size, and that semi-rural feel. I want to preserve that lifestyle for Ham Lake. I believe in public safety, making our roads safer, and of course, supporting our police and fire departments. One area that I would like to focus on, and it is in the comprehensive plan, but I'd like to see it move forward, is the continued development of bike trails and walkways. As we're growing, we're 85% full, we have a lot of wonderful parks, but we need those trails and walkways to safely connect our neighborhoods. And I think that's an issue. I can't leave my house and really ride my bike too far because it's too dangerous. The kids can't go to places because it's too dangerous. So it's in the comprehensive plan, and I would like to see continued development of bike trails in cooperation with Anoka County on some of the regional trails that are planned for Ham Lake.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the questions that were submitted online and followed by some of the ones submitted through the Chamber of Commerce. And we're probably not going to get through all of these, so if you submitted a question and it doesn't get asked, please be sure to touch base with the candidates afterwards. So we'll now go to 60 seconds on each response. And this first question is, "Please share your level of commitment regarding assuring that Ham Lake will maintain the one-acre minimum requirement for residential lots." And we're going to rotate, starting with Rory Green.
So I can speak similar to Corinne. It's like, we came out for the one-acre lots, right? I mean, that's what sold us, that's what I see across the door-knocking that I do. It is absolutely imperative that we keep that and sustain that. If we don't, Ham Lake's unique character, quite frankly, is gone. We lose the mystique and the attractiveness. I live right down the street on Lexington. There's a purpose for everything, but I see Blaine and Lexington, and they stack them in there. And to me, it's like, I see it, and there's a purpose for it, but not in Ham Lake. For me, it's a zero tolerance, and whatever it takes to ensure that that does not happen is what I represent. It is why we have the values that we do. That's why we have the neighbors that we do. I mean, it speaks volumes on what represents Ham Lake and what makes it unique. And I would do everything I possibly can in my powers to work with the mayor and others to adhere to that one-acre lot. It's a have-to-have, it's not a nice-to-have for me.
Thank you. And moving on, regarding the one-acre minimum lot requirement and your level of commitment, next up is Al Parento.
I've always been 100% committed to at least one-acre lot size. Part of that is working with or not working with the Met Council. They can come in if we put in city water and sewer. They can come in and decide that we have to put in high-density housing. So it's important to have a council that's been committed and will stay committed to keeping that type of atmosphere out of Ham Lake if you want to maintain the one-acre lot size. Everybody in town seems to appreciate that. I know there's been some lots in the past that have been smaller, and that seems to work out okay, there's no problems there. But I think going forward, it's something that we have to do. And I don't believe there's anybody on the current council that has questioned that direction in any way whatsoever. It's something we fully support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Corinne Seltz.
Well, we're probably going to get unanimous agreement on this, but the reason we chose Ham Lake, we moved here from, we were in California for five years, and we specifically chose Ham Lake because of the large lot size. We kind of joke that we overcompensated coming back from California. But this is why we chose Ham Lake. We wanted the large lot size. There's a place for high-density housing. I don't think that place is in Ham Lake. I appreciate the open space. I appreciate the views that we have and the lifestyle that we have in this city, and I would not want that changed, and I hope we can maintain that. I think the high-density housing, again, the infrastructure, the water and the sewer that go along with it, the change in the character of the community is not appropriate for Ham Lake. That's not who we are, and I want to maintain that quality of life in Ham Lake, and I would be dedicated to ensure we maintain that lot size.
Thank you. And then finally, the last candidate for this question is Jim Doyle.
Well, I totally support Al on this. I've worked with him for a long time, and all I have to say is, I've been doing it for 12 years, protecting this. Why would I change now? I'm not going to. So I guess proof's in the pudding. You've got somebody that's got experience, you've got somebody that's already got a history of saying, "One-acre lots. We're not allowing anything else. That's it." I've been doing it for 12 years. That's all I can say.
Thank you. We'll move to the next question. And we've already heard a little bit about the city of Blaine and how Ham Lake kind of competes with them in some regards. This one has to do with a very visible water well pumping issue that the city of Blaine has had over the last couple of years. And specifically, the question says, "How will you guard against the situation that happened with the city of Blaine water pumping because it's negatively impacting some of the private wells in Ham Lake?" So with that, we'll start with Al Parento.
Well, we all have our own private wells, and if there's a problem coming out of Blaine, we're going to have to address that. There's been talk of some people trying to hook up to the Blaine system, and I don't believe that's possible. And I'm not sure it's possible to hook into the East Bethel system, and I don't know that anybody here in town is interested. I'm not completely familiar with the problems in Blaine taking water out of Ham Lake, but I guess at the next meeting for the council, I'll be bringing that up, and it's something we're going to have to look into, and then find a way to help anybody that's been affected adversely by this situation. Thank you.
Thanks. And I should mention that these were the questions submitted, so I failed to do fact-checking ahead of time, but I figure you guys are the experts, anyway. So next up on this question is Corinne Seltz.
Well, I'm not deeply familiar with the issue, but I would say, again, if we're going to maintain our policy of no sewer, no water in Ham Lake, we also have to protect those resources. And if there's an issue with Blaine that they're contaminating our water system, I think we have to deal with them and make them responsible for mitigating that in whatever way has to be taken, or action that has to be taken. We are going to keep Ham Lake with our own sewer and water, and those wells have to be protected. Our environment and our water should have to be protected. And again, if there's an issue, then it has to be dealt with to the fullest extent.
And next up is Jim Doyle.
Well, I am familiar with this. And what's happened is, a lot of the mining situation of sand and those type of things can affect the various wells, depending on the depth, what aquifer you had. Most of ours are down, probably, they should be down at least 180 feet or more. And what happens is, it can deplete some of these wells if there's too much development in a certain area. We have, as a city, already contacted Blaine, and any of those people that have been affected, they are, Blaine is going to fix it, you know, governments work. But they have, we've already approached this issue, and it is supposed to be rectified for those that have been affected. But those are things that just come up with new development. So, thank you.
Thanks. And next up is Rory Green.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with this. As I was door-knocking, a couple of folks had mentioned it to me, as well as it's impacted some of my neighbors. So, you know, with the drought, Blaine running out of water, they asked to, you know, kind of put those wells in. They put additional wells in that were not approved. So there's become an issue where wells are drying up, right? And those aquifers are drying up. And the response from Blaine was, "Anything up to Bunker Lake Boulevard, let us know. We'll take care of you. Anything after that, you're going to have to work with the DNR." And the compensation is taking way too long. It's unacceptable, and we need to hold those folks accountable. I hear just, I'm trying to water, you know, I'm trying to take a shower, water completely shut off. That's not okay. It's not okay. So we need to do better. We need to step up with Blaine, hold them accountable, and expand past Bunker Lake Boulevard, because what we moved to Ham Lake for was the septic and well. And now they've taken that right away. So let's go after them. Let's make them accountable and get compensated immediately.
Thank you. We'll move on to the third question that was submitted, and this one also relates to issues that homeowners are interested in. Around the country, there's been efforts with vacation rentals and Airbnbs to look at having homes in the community rented out. And so this question says, "Will you oppose allowing vacation rentals and Airbnbs to operate in Ham Lake?" And we'll start with Corinne Seltz.
Well, I'm for property owner rights, and I think you should be able to do what you want with your property and rent it out, as long as there are certain limitations. For property owner rights, as long as they don't infringe on the rights of others. And I know with Airbnb, there have been a lot of issues of people renting houses and having parties and things getting excessive, and infringing on their neighbors with the loud music or parking cars. If it could be done in a way that promotes our lifestyle and maintains our quality of life, I'm not opposed to it. I want you to be able to use your homes in a way that's appropriate. But if those go too far, and I know Airbnb is putting in regulations and things to try to mitigate that, I think it would be okay.
And next up is Jim Doyle.
Yeah, we've already addressed this issue in Ham Lake and tried to minimize the impact that this, because it is kind of a two-way deal, because capitalism and people doing them with their own property and that type of thing. But we've had stag at parties, we've had stag parties, and that, where there's multiple people over a weekend next to a homeowner who bought it for the quietness of that environment. And nobody wants to have that every other weekend. Nobody deserves to have that every other weekend. So we've got some ordinances that are in play, and then it becomes a policing issue. And the policing issues, we can tell them, but we can't force that on them. So I think there could be an opportunity for minimal stuff on that, but very for short periods of time, but not party-type of situations where somebody wanted to rent it for a month for a family. So, thanks.
Okay. And again, the question is, "Will you oppose allowing vacation rentals and Airbnbs to operate in Ham Lake?" And next up is Rory Green.
Yeah, I think as long as they play by the rules, right? I mean, as long as there's, like, to Jim's point, there's ordinances and people are adhering to those, right? As it becomes a problem, I think we readdress that issue, right? As it becomes a larger problem. But I think for the most part, it's your home, and if you want that opportunity to rent it out, I know some individuals with the golf tournament in the local area, they make six months' worth of their mortgage payment renting out their house. It's a capital opportunity, and I don't want to take that away from them. Is there going to be a few bad apples? Absolutely. But let's make sure that they adhere to the rules and regulations that we have put in place, and then make sure that we hold them accountable.
Thank you. And the final candidate on this question is Al Parento.
I would be opposed to a blanket ruling that you cannot rent out your house in Ham Lake. As an advocate of your personal property rights, you should be able to do what you want with your home. We have dealt with this, like Jim said, at the county, or at the council level. We've had complaints from individual properties, and like we do with most things in Ham Lake, we respond to complaints, and we're happy to deal with them. So there's a couple bad apples, and there's plenty of people that are doing it the right way, and I don't want to step on their toes. And I have no problem dealing with the people that aren't following the rules or making it less desirable for your neighbors to be here. So we're dealing with it, and we're going to continue to deal with it. And no, I wouldn't want to stop people from renting out their home in Ham Lake. It's a beautiful place for other people to come visit. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the next question that was submitted, this one through the Chamber of Commerce. And the question is, "As a leader in Ham Lake, your decisions can have a deep impact on the businesses of every size. Are there local changes that you would pursue to encourage economic development in our community and support businesses of all size?" And we'll start with Jim Doyle.
First of all, Ham Lake, Al and myself and everybody else, when the PPL monies came out to help businesses here, every dollar of that, that first amount of money that came in, went to all of the business to help them be stable in an unstable environment. This not only affected the regular-sized, brick-and-mortar-type of buildings, but it also was the home businesses that happened, too. also was the home businesses that happened too. The chiropractor or the hairstylist in their home, they all got it. We didn't keep any of that money. We didn't believe, and that was put out there for a reason, to help these people survive. That's my attitude, and we're going to continue. We've got funding, we've got other things that are coming into this, into Ham Lake, it's coming up next year. There's a lot of nice stuff that's coming in here, so we support it 100%. But I'm always behind new business, and we'll do what we have to, have them come in.
Thank you. So regarding encouraging economic development in the community and supporting business of all sizes, next up is Rory Green.
Yeah, it's really number three on my topics of discussion, and what I'm looking to do with Ham Lake is incentivize and motivate businesses to come out here. We've got 60,000 cars that go up and down 65. There's a huge opportunity that we're just neighboring from Blaine, you've got 6 million people that go to the National Sports Center. We can attract those folks to head north. There is a significant opportunity, I think, that Ham Lake can grab a hold and take advantage of. I think we incentivize, I think we smile and dial and start recruiting some of these businesses. We're growing, there's 6,000 houses that are going to go up over by Lionel Lakes, there's just massive developments that are happening. People want to eat and be entertained, and we need to find places for them to go to. And quite frankly, why not head north, right? That wide-open space, we have beautiful views that we can take advantage of. I think if we can incentivize some of these businesses to come there and show them the attraction, the appeal that we've all seen from Ham Lake, I think we've got an opportunity to really grow in the right way and provide some of that entertainment and food for Ham Lake residents and others outside of Ham Lake.
Thank you, and next up on this question is Al Peranto.
Well, Jim and I are both small business owners, and I believe we're doing everything in our power to make this city more attractive to business people of every level. And I think the number-one criteria for that is our low tax base. That makes people want to come here and build their business, and we're seeing it happen up and down Highway 65 currently. I see some changes in the economy, so I'm not sure that's going to continue, but I sure hope it does. What I do know is going to continue is that we're going to continue to keep our tax base low and make it a desirable place to live and do business. And I'd agree, I'd like to see more restaurants come to town. We can't force businesses to come here, we can only do everything we can to make the environment more attractive for people to want to come and put their business in Ham Lake. Thanks.
And finally, on this question is Corinne Sels.
I agree, I want to see more commercial development in Ham Lake. I think we have a tremendous opportunity with the Highway 65 corridor. There is so much traffic and so much opportunity for businesses, but I want to make sure it's the right kind of businesses that come in, businesses that really enhance the quality of life in Ham Lake and don't detract from it. We need the doctors' offices, the restaurants, places where we can go get our hair cut, things like that, the small businesses. And I will say, what I would not want to see is, I don't want to see Ham Lake turned into a big-box paved parking lot area. I want development that enhances the quality of our life and is in alliance with the character of Ham Lake, not the big-box stores, not paving over the beauty of Ham Lake. Let's attract those small business owners, those innovators and entrepreneurs who can really bring great ideas and a great quality of life to Ham Lake, and increase our tax base.
Thank you. So we'll move to the next question, and this is also kind of related to business issues. "Given the budget constraints of the city budget, how do you plan to maximize the use of taxpayer dollars? And this gets into, what do you see as the top priorities for the city along those lines?" And we're going to start with Rory Green.
Yeah, I think everything, you know, Jim had called out, like, everything's going in cost from an inflation perspective, but I think it's just an allocation and prioritization. I work for a Fortune 5 company, and my job is financial management and operational efficiency, took me a minute there. So I work with, you know, high-level clients, trying to figure out how we streamline, implement, improve individuals and their experience. I think from a prioritization standpoint, public safety is one of my top priorities, right? We have three officers that work 12-hour days. I would look to actually increase the police presence, working with cops, our police officers, they're doing a hell of a job, and, you know, having conversations with them, just actually yesterday, they're looking for additional help. So again, I think it's a collective thing of working with your colleagues here, as well as working with the mayor, Brian Kirkham, to figure out from a prioritization standpoint, where's our biggest bang for our buck? Where do we get, you know, the biggest juice, or squeeze from the juice? And, you know, prioritize from there, and what do the people want, right? I represent you, so you help me decide what we need to do. And then collectively, we come up with that list from a prioritization standpoint.
Thank you. So regarding the top priorities for the city and staying within budget constraints and uses of taxpayer dollars, next up is Al Peranto.
Well, I believe we need to continue on the path we're on. We run a tight budget here in Ham Lake, and everything seems to get funded that the city needs, and we're not wasting anyone's dollars anywhere that we're aware of. I'm sure we would hear about it if we were. It's important that we keep our fire department up to speed, and we keep our police protection where it is. We may not necessarily need more police hours, it hasn't been recommended to me that we do, and we're always looking out at the budget for the police as well to make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck, as we do with every aspect of the city. So for me, I don't see any new priorities, I see holding the line because everything seems to be going pretty smoothly in Ham Lake, and we're holding your tax dollars down, and we're doing that intentionally, and I think that's what the people want us to do. Thank you.
And finally, with this question, the next up is Jim Doyle. Or is it? Corinne Sels.
Thank you. I agree, Ham Lake is run very efficiently, and I'd like to keep it that way. I want to see our taxes low. The city budget runs probably pretty similar to the budgets that we have in our households. It's all a matter of priorities. Being efficient, prioritizing, fire and safety are of course the number-one priority. I know we have to deal with some of the costs and some of the issues with that budget going up. Maybe we need to start getting more creative and bring more dollars into the city to fund some of that, and that's where, again, that business development will help us. In the meantime, maintaining the quality of life by keeping our taxes low and focusing on those issues that are of most importance to all of you, but prioritizing, enhancing the business, that we, business community here, so that the burden doesn't fall to taxpayers.
Thank you, and finally, Jim Doyle.
Yeah, the top issues are obviously fire and police, and as far as maintaining the safety of the roads and those type of things, and, you know, I'm on the Personnel Committee, the Roads Committee, the Building Committee, the Equipment Committee, Audit Committee, I'm on all that, so I get to see a lot of all this stuff. But I, you know, what we've done, especially in the last several years, is that we've really maintained a very financially fit city through some of the most hardest times. We have one bond that's going to come out due in 2026. We'll be the only city in the state of Minnesota that doesn't have a bond. I mean, that's pretty damn impressive. So we've got some, keeping the top priorities, keep government small, keeping government small, not letting them spend as much money as they think they need to, and just put it where it needs to be, period.
Thank you, and we're going to be going into closing comments in a moment here, but I thought we'd try something that we did in Columbia Heights a few weeks ago, when I'm going to ask you to describe the person next to you in a couple of words on why you think they would be a good city council member. And so I'm going to say, "Look to your right," and for Jim, you'd be looking at Al. No.
Oh.
And so we'll go in the right, right? Well, it doesn't quite work when we're sitting in a line, but, so, and we'll go in the order here that we've been rotating, so Al will be the first one to answer, and so, yes.
Al, or Rory?
Well, because Rory did the last one starting, we're going to do this one, Al, and then we'll go into closing comments, it might be different, but, okay.
You want me to talk about Al?
Sure.
Okay.
In a couple of words. Thank you.
Ethical integrity, hard worker, really good principles, I think he represents his city and their values as a whole, and he really believes in that. And good family man, good businessman, knows his stuff.
Okay, next up Rory.
What about Jim? You know, Jim's been in the business, right? He's been doing it for 12 years, so he's been around the block and knows a few tricks up his sleeves, right? So he's got a lot of experience, he's got high integrity, and he wants what's best for Ham Lake.
We'll go next to Corinne.
And I'm talking about Rory, right?
Yep.
Well, I just had the pleasure of meeting Rory this evening, and from what I've had in my encounter with him is, I can say he is a good, solid family man. He believes in his family, and he believes in the city of Ham Lake, and that's wonderful to see. He also comes out of business, which I think gives great experience for anybody trying to run a city. You need to know how to manage budgets and be efficient, so he seems like a great candidate for Ham Lake City Council.
And finally, Al Peranto.
Likewise, I just met Corinne moments ago, so I, all I can decipher at this point is she seems to be someone who really loves Ham Lake, and she's very articulated and organized, and I think that would be good qualities to be a council person. Thank you.
Good, thank you for that. So you've all had the chance, right? Okay. And so you can see they're all people, when it comes down to voting, that you're all living here and they all have the best interests of the city at heart. So with that, we're going to start with the closing comments. It's 60 seconds, and we're kind of rotating a little bit, so it's different than when we started at the opening, so we're going to start with Rory Green on your closing comments. 60 seconds.
Right. Hey, I just want to thank everybody for their time. It has been a tremendous experience. I'm really just taking it all in and seeing everybody smiles. It's just been a wonderful opportunity, and I just want to thank everybody. I'll close out with what I say to my kids at night, "Be strong and courageous, do not be afraid or discouraged, for the Lord will love you." Joshua 11:9. So, that's it.
Thank you, and next for closing comments, Al Peranto.
Well, thank you for coming out this evening and being part of this process. I've really enjoyed my time serving the city of Ham Lake, six-plus years on the council with a couple years on the Planning and Zoning Committee. I believe that the current council is doing an outstanding job, if I might say so myself. Seems to be, things seem to be going very well in Ham Lake, and I would like to continue to do what I'm doing for Ham Lake, protecting your personal property rights, keeping your taxes low, and keeping this a wonderful place to live and raise your family. So if you would, please vote for me, Al Peranto, and my good friend, Jim Doyle. Thank you.
Next up is Corinne Sels.
Well, thank you. This has been absolutely a wonderful experience, and I'm so impressed that all of you came out on this lovely fall evening to participate in this. It's been a great experience. I believe I'll be a strong and effective leader for Ham Lake. As you, I hope you can see, I'm passionate about our city, and I want to make it a great place for our families. I want to be able to live here for the long term and hopefully retire here. There are a few things that I do want to prioritize for the city. I want to keep our taxes low, and I want to encourage new development, new commercial development in Ham Lake. Again, bring in more vibrant, innovative businesses, so that we can go out to eat, we don't have to go to Blaine and other areas. Let's make Ham Lake more livable. I want to preserve our way of life, as I said. I believe in keeping the large lot size and maintaining that rural feel of Ham Lake. And for me, public safety is important, and I think for the future of Ham Lake, an area that I would like to see, is continued development of the safety of our roads and trails and bikeways, so kids can get, visit friends in other neighborhoods and get around the community, make it a more livable, walkable community than it already is.
Thank you. So we'll have one final closing comment, and then we'll go into some wrap-up things, and we'll switch candidates and move on to the next part here. So the final closing comment goes to Jim Doyle.
Well, I think with my experience, and especially with having young people on the council right now, is that I really think they need me there to help mentor their way through this process, especially with the economy changing and some unknowns out there. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but you can see it coming a little bit. We might be on the edge of a recession, we might not be, but there's some things that I've worked through. I've worked through within this city, and we did a really good job doing that, not just by myself, but Al and Gary and a few other people that have been on the thing. So, you know, I just want to let you know that I still have the urge to run, I still have the urge to work for you, and I'm going to, I still have this ethical and moral integrity that I will lead by, and I have never shown anything different in 12 years. And our bios are all the same. Why would you want to change when you've got a guy that's got 12 years' experience? But anyway, so I just want to thank you for your support. Thanks.
Thank you. I have just a couple of quick wrap-ups here, so I want to thank the candidates for speaking to the voters about the issues and for running for election for the Ham Lake City Council. I want to thank the sponsors, which is the Ham Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, because they put a lot of hard work into this. Thank you, Carrie and others, and thanks to the North Metro TV for their video production. Finally, thanks to the viewers for your interest in becoming informed voters. If you have questions that were left off of this forum, contact these individuals directly, and as we move through the election season, there'll be a link to local election forums at the League of Women Voters website, lwvabcmn.org, or on YouTube. There's a lot of races on the ballot this year because of redistricting, which happens only once every 10 years, and I know personally, I did a preview on my sample ballot and was surprised how many races there are, especially, don't forget that back page. But if you would like to review your ballot, see your sample ballot, it's available online in its easy website, mnvotes.gov. So that'll take you to the Secretary of State's website, you input your address, and you can see your sample ballot. Of course, we've already started early voting, the actual election day is on Tuesday, November 8th, and so when you vote, you participate in democracy, you make it stronger for everyone here. So remember to vote, and thank you for coming this evening. Thanks to the candidates, appreciate it.